Good evening and welcome to Committee of the Whole, meeting of the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board. It is now time that we begin our meeting. Will we start with the invocation will be led by School Board Member Shashone Stewart and our pledge of allegiance will be led by School Board Member Katie Kennison. Let us stand.
Bow your heads, please. Dear God, thank you for allowing us to join here today. Give us the mindset to come to a peaceful resolution in all that we do and all that we ask in your name. Amen.
Our meeting is now called to order. We will begin with updates from our superintendent.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, sorry.
District two, President Lanis. District three, Vice President Powell.
Present.
District one, Mr. Blue.
Here.
District four, Ms. Stewart.
Present.
District five, Mr. Lewis.
Present.
District six, Mr. Russ.
Present.
District seven, Mr. Gode.
Present.
District eight, Ms. Kennison.
Present.
District nine, Mr. Martin.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We will now proceed with updates from our superintendent, Dr. Narcisse.
Thank you, Vice President Powell. This week, we had such a very exciting week. Today, we were going to recognize Park Elementary for being one of the comeback schools. I see the city or team in the back, hey, guys? We're super excited to share that our turnaround strategy for student achievement and school success is working. This week, the state superintendent, Dr. K. Brumley, visited Park Medical Academy to congratulate them for being named the Louisiana Comeback Campus. This honor is given to underperforming schools who have progressed to at least a C-letter grade. We remember we had two board members with us there. President Lanis was there as well as Vice President Powell, but just to see the excitement with Principal Tate and the team. So we are really excited about the work that they're doing. As you know, that has been one of our focus choice schools and just excited about the partnership that has happened there with Baton Rouge General Hospital and all the interventions and literacy support here. So Principal Tate is not here today, so I did share with Vice President Powell, we want to recognize when she comes back at the next board meeting to just give her and her staff credit. I'll invite them first officially, you know, tell them thank you for their hard work. So we will do that at the next board meeting. I'd also like to congratulate a number of our magnet schools who were recently recognized with the Magnet Schools of American National Magnet School of Merit Award. So please help me in congratulating the following schools: BRCVP, Baton Rouge Center for Visual Performing Arts. Let's just give them a hand. Baton Rouge Foreign Language Academic Immersion Magnet, BRFL. Westdale Heights Elementary School. McKinley Middle Magnet School. Sherwood Middle School. Villa Del Ray Elementary School. Belfair Montessori. Mayfair Laboratory School. Scotlandville Middle School. Westdale Middle School. And Baton Rouge Magnet High School. Congratulations again to all of those schools. These schools will be officially recognized during an awards ceremony in the April at Magnet School Conference of America, which is the 40th national conference, which will be held in Dallas, Texas. And so we're super excited about the progress that these schools have made and also being awarded with other schools across the country with this designation. I just want to highlight just one more piece around district events. We're excited about the upcoming district events. Our yearly poetry slam, which highlights original work of poetry by our students, will be held on March 30th at Liberty Magnet High School from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And we're also thrilled about our fan favorite. We call it the Districtwide Spelling Bee. This two-day event will be held on April 4th and 5th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. each night. The event will be back at the Knock Knock Muse- Children's Museum. The first night will be held, the third, the third, and the fifth. Super excited about that. Last year, when we started to do a Districtwide Spelling Bee after all of the schools had their spelling bee, it has been a fierce competition. Families are super excited about that. We are as well. And so we expect another packed house again for our kids. I did get to see some kids already practicing their spelling and told me they're going to get back to the district championship. So it is, it's a great annual event and we're excited about that. Madam Vice President, that is my report.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Dr. Narcisse, and congratulations to all of the schools and the students that were acknowledged during his report as well. Let us continue with, okay, there's one more item.
Sorry, I had one more page. This is a highlight. Finally, we have seen tremendous growth in the success of ninth-grade students across our system. Part of students who are on track in the ninth grade are more likely than off-track students to graduate from high school. For EBR, more ninth graders are on track in just two years than we've ever had before. We went from 68% to 87% of the students are on track, and we'll be providing more details on these exciting findings during my update at the next regular board meeting. We'll do an actual presentation for the board for each school, and we're super excited about that. And let's give that a hand, too, because, you know, for kids to be progressing is important to us. Madam Vice President, that's my report.
Once again, congratulations and thank you so much, Dr. Narcisse. We are moving to Item C, Items for Consideration. Number one, Request for Proposal, RFP, EBR Magazine Publication. Consideration of a request to authorize staff to issue a request for proposals, RFP, for custom magazine publication, strategic alignment, exemplary customer services, and funding source general fund. Is there a motion? It's moved by Mr. Blue and seconded by Mr. Gode. Comments from the board. Comments from the public. Okay. Comments from the board. Okay, Madam Secretary, will you lead us in a vote? Please vote. The motion carries. Item two, Grant, The Lion Electric Company. Consideration of a request to accept the donation of 19 electric buses and charging stations from The Lion Electric Company. Provided funds from the Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, grant award. Strategic alignment, operational excellence. Is there a motion? Okay, all right. All right, so it was moved by, by Ms. Stewart and seconded by Board President Lanis. Okay, all right. Comments from the board. All right, President Lanis.
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice President. Thank you, board, and also, Mrs. Superintendent. I am quite excited for this particular item because you never see stuff amazing since you've been on the job. You've been able to raise external dollars for the district as well as go out and find some external partners that could help to donate buses to our district where it's not any existing cost that has come out of our coffers. So I just want to say that I'm beyond pleased at this particular item. I'm beyond pleased at the services that we have been receiving. So I just say, keep up the great work. Thank you.
Any additional comments? Okay, comments from the public. Okay, comments from the board. All right, Board Member Russ.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we put in the public record that this is a grant. It's through the EPA. If you don't love your tax dollars spent that way, talk to your congressman, not your school board. This is a win overall for the board, for the system, excuse me, and a no-brainer, in my opinion. So, great job, Dr. Narcisse.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the board? Okay. Okay, there's a presentation. Dr. Narcisse?
So we did want to do, just give a presentation. I'm going to invite up Ms. Monique Scott Spalding, our Chief Operating Officer, and also one of the, our heads that help support us from the Transportation Office and the Lion Center Group.
Can you hear me? You can? Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce you to Melinda Sandu from Lion Electric Company. She will share a little information with you.
Thank you very much for this time. My name is Melinda Sandu. I'm with Lion Electric. I've been in the school transportation industry for almost 20 years, and I've been with Lion Electric for four and a half years. Lion is the manufacturer of electric trucks and buses. We manufacture Class V through eight vehicles, and we have almost 1,000 vehicles on the road today. That equals, equates to about 10 million miles of experience for these vehicles. Our current capacity to produce and manufacture vehicles is around 2,500 annually, and we are opening a factory in Joliet, Illinois, which will be the largest factory dedicated to medium and heavy-duty vehicles in the United States. And when that ramps up to full capacity, it'll be capable of running up to, manufacturing up to 20,000 vehicles a year. We, last year, we opened our battery manufacturing plant, and we have 12 experience centers across the United States right now with approximately 1,300 employees. This is a picture of our factory. We will be doing the grand opening this summer. It's almost a million square feet. Like I said, it's going to be the largest of its kind in the United States, and it'll be producing both our electric trucks and buses. So Lion has been producing vehicles since 2011. We delivered our first electric bus in 2016, and I joined the company around 2018. If you Google Lion Trucks, you'll see that we have delivered Class VI trucks to both IKEA and Amazon. And then that, the picture of our factory just shows our dedication and commitment to the electrification process right now, what's happening in the United States. So part of doing, working with Lion, and this district has already had experiences a little bit when we applied for the grant, we worked with your team. We offer services such as Grants, a Grants team. Our Lion Energy team is where I took a step back and we worked with your utility and your transportation department to discuss and determine which chargers and how the infrastructure was going to work. And, and this just gives you an example of some of the other departments that we have and that work with me to provide a great solution for you. So some of the benefits of electric buses, we all know the harmful effects of diesel toxins on students and employees, but in addition to that, there is a, these vehicles do, are quiet. They are great for noise pollution. Last week, when we had the bus here, I had to remind people that it was on, so there is a safety signal built into it. But above the health benefits, it is cheaper to run. And so what we found from having these run since 2016 is districts are seeing a 80% reduction on their energy costs, so fuel reductions, and 60% reduction on maintenance and operations budgets. And the funding that you receive with the bipartisan infrastructure bill was, there's a total of $5 billion available, and the first round, which was administered by the EPA, was $1 billion of that, close to $1 billion. And when we talked about the energy and maintenance reduction costs, when you talk about cost per mile, what we see from districts is about 8 to 12 cents cost per mile for an electric vehicle and close to 28 to 32 cents per mile when you're looking at a diesel vehicle. The reason I give you a bit of a range is different districts put in different variables in that, but we also worked out a cost, a total cost of ownership with your team to explain and lay out what the lifecycle cost reductions are on running electric vehicles. These also are some of the community benefits, the health benefits. Feel free, I always tell people to take pictures. I've add resources where we got these statistics, but I also have lots of articles that are available on the effects of medium and heavy-duty transportation. Right now, they count for about 30% of the emissions throughout the United States in transportation corridors. And I've, when I started, began talking to your district, I actually shared a lot of articles that are sent to me or I read, and you're welcome to request them from me, too. One of the questions I had was why East Baton Rouge was prioritized. So I took this section out of the EPA requirements, and this was one of the reasons you were, you were selected as a priority district for this rebate program. By the end of this, when the EPA rebate program is finished at the end of April, we will have a few dozen vehicles in Texas, 60 in Oklahoma, some in the Atlanta metropolitan area. In this state, we have close to over 50 buses that will be deployed, and in Alabama, there'll be nine. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions? Are there any questions?
Okay, all right. Coach Lewis?
Question. Everybody talks about safety with school buses. There's a lot of debate around seat belts, safety belts in school buses. Will they, is there any chances that these buses will be equipped with seat belts?
So seat belts are actually a state specification. Right now, in the United States, I think there is eight districts that require seat belts. And so your buses were not spec'd with seat belts. It's not required in this state.
As a nationwide producer of school buses, you think it'd help if you guys got in the game? I mean, you gotta know how.
We offer them.
Okay, you offer, you just didn't, we just.
Actually, the bus we had last week did have seat belts on them. It's a state mandated specification. So we, believe it or not, every state and county has different specifications, so it's not required in this state.
Well, tell Louisiana if they keep wanting to get in these buses, then they should put some seat belts in them.
It is probably the most common debate at every school bus transportation conference.
I'm sure. Thank you.
President Lanis?
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice President. First, I'd like to acknowledge that I already spoke, so I had to use this as a personal privilege, appointed personal privilege. And what I do moving forward is I'll just wait to speak for that last round when we come back to the boards, for board comments. I just wanted to say again, thank you all for helping our district be a part of this amazing program. And I just wanted to spell out a few things that I didn't get to say earlier, one of which is in that first round of funding, this was 7.5 million dollars in funding that we received in the very first round. And I say that to say that whenever our board members go out and talk to our constituents, let them know that our district is putting our best foot forward and making sure that not only are we going out and getting safer buses that are more economically friendly and environmentally friendly, but we are also making sure that we are putting our best foot forward in terms of cost savings. And we will be participating in that next round of funding. We look forward to working with you all. So, thank you again.
I would also like to share as well that I got a chance to participate on the day of the actual presentation. Board Member Gode was there as well, and it was a wonderful experience. So, of course, you guys know that, I've shared with you before, that I'm a former teacher or that I am a teacher by trade and, and that I've taken kids on many, many field trips, and the most horrible part of the trip was usually taking the school bus. And I really felt like that was a very pleasant ride. It was a very quiet ride as well. With that in mind, when, when I first noticed the quietness, my concern was safety, you know? So in the case that if the bus is moving or stopping, you know, will those around the bus recognize the mechanisms? And sure enough, there's a mic that projects itself on the outside of the bus that allows those around to know that it's stopping and know that, know that kids are getting off of the bus. There's also the camera on the bus for safety as well, which was very, very impressive because I had never really seen those things in action. And to have it in such a progressive manner was very wonderful to see. So, thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments from the board? Okay, thank you.
I just want to take one moment to recognize Cherie Osberry from Entergy. She's our representative, and Energy is providing electrical services to us free of charge. So I want to recognize Energy and thank them for their support.
Madam President?
You have to go to the audience, I believe.
We have to go to the audience? Okay. All right, so, public comment from the audience. Okay, comments from the board. And Madam President, we're going to turn you into Madam Secretary. And will you lead us in a vote?
Please vote. The motion carries.
Thank you. Item three, Professional Services Contract Addendum. Consideration of a request for the approval of an addendum to the professional services contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School System and Amplify to add fourth-grade DIBELS assessment licenses and related materials to the scope of work in order to meet the recently changed requirements of BESI 1566. Strategic Alignment, Academic Achievement, Funding Source, S.R. 2. Is there a motion? It's been moved by Board Member Blue and seconded by Board Member Stewart. And are there any comments from the board? School Board Member Lewis?
Thank you. I've, I've been looking at this all week long, and I had some, I still got a few questions about it, and I realized that it was kind of a late thing from the state, you know, just kind of surprised people with this. I've researched this week, and I've looked at DIBELS, and I find, I've found it hard to find anything about their fourth-grade assessments. Seems like every time I ask for something around fourth grade, it comes back K3 or K6. So, does DIBELS have a true fourth-grade assessment? Is my first question. My second question is, this contract will run from January 17th through June. Have we thought about a pilot program? Have we looked at any other vendors that may provide K4 assessments that we could get? You know, pilot programs are basically free. So is there anybody that we can get as a pilot that will come in from February to June, train the teachers, let us get a look at how it works before we spend $91,000?
Yeah, I'll call up Ms. Andrea Okowski from Accountability Assessment. And just to start that off, the, yes, it is, it came from the state. And number two, the state only provide us with four options to do the, and four options in terms of the assessment to do for, for this late request. And DIBELS was one of them, and so was one of the four. But I'll let Ms. Okowski give more context.
Sure. Thank you for the questions, Mr. Lewis. And good evening, everyone. As the superintendent indicated, let me back up a minute. In December, districts were informed that back last fall, BESI changed language in Bulletin 1566, which is the state's pupil progression policy. And they added an addendum, and that addendum said the districts now had to assess using an LDOE-approved literacy assessment, fourth graders at the end of the year, in order to make decisions about a required remediation program. And so the remediation is now going to be required of that promotion standard. Well, in order to do that, you have to have an assessment in place. And so stereotypically, it's been my professional practice, whenever the department refers to a literacy assessment, they're referring to those K3 screeners, which is why, Mr. Lewis, you, you didn't see that much about fourth grade, and because Louisiana, we typically talk about DIBELS as K3. And so all their guidance documents have the K3, and even their hyperlinks have the K3. To answer your question between now and the vote, I can get the vendor to give us some specifics on the fourth grade, that it gives a comparison of each. But to let you know, there is a grade-specific assessment for each level. It actually goes to grade eight. Historically, in Louisiana, it's only been used K3 for the most part. There are some folks, because what honestly, if I look in my portal and I look in some things, there are some fourth and fifth grade students who have been assessed on the down-low for some of the issues that we talked about earlier this week. Maybe a reading disability, maybe some other things that have flagged things for that child. And so that, using the resources of a free, a free version of, they've done that. Amplify is the portal that we use for K3. We have an existing contract with Amplify. They offered us a discount to add grade four because we are adding mid-year, and we're adding it as an addendum to the existing contract. As the superintendent said, there are only four that you can choose from. The question has been floated to the department in reference to Bulletin 156 addendum, what, what is meant by the LDOE-approved literacy assessment, and it came back with the bullets of those four pieces. So, you and I talked earlier this week, going with another vendor would have a cost with training, because we, our school teams are, our school teams are trained in DIBELS. We have a, we have a professional development services contract with Amplify, where the last two summers, they spent time with our instructional staff, training. Then, we also have the mechanism tying into rostering. So as soon as you guys would approve this, then it's already connected to our CIS. And so on the Amplify end, they would just release more licenses and grab our fourth graders. If we went to another vendor, we would have to do the dance with the rostering of the portal. That may take a little more time. In a perfect world, we'd have been able to bring this earlier in the school year. We didn't find out until December. My concern right now is, what I would like to do is, with you guys passing this this month, we could offer a middle-of-the-year window for schools so they could practice test fourth graders before they had to do the end of the year. And so time is of the essence. If we could get this approved this month, then we could open up at the beginning of March that window so that teachers could practice tests, the middle-of-the-year assessment, because there's a beginning, middle, and end, on the students to get a pulse on those fourth graders, to know where they stand, so that we could do those interventions and that remediation prior to that last, end-of-the-year assessment window.
I could just add one additional piece in terms of our schools being used to DIBELS. Every elementary school in our school system, they do the K3 DIBELS, and there is a designated team person.
Correct.
That helps at the school already. When principals are usually reviewing their data for the elementary When principals are usually reviewing their data for the elementary schools that are from K to five, they're usually talking about DIBELS and then any other assessment after that. So, there's a familiarity for teachers with the DIBELS.
What about our ESS students who are struggling reading now?
School Board Member Lewis, just one moment. You'll have to ask that when we come back to board comments.
I'm sorry.
All right. All right. Okay. So, Ms. Okowski, I do have two questions of my own. One of them is around how many fourth graders are we hoping to purchase licenses for? And then, just for the sake of the public, what is DIBELS?
Okay. Let me take the first question first, and I'll go to the second one. We're purchasing licenses for our projected enrollment of fourth grade. Because this will be this year and next year, we have charter schools who are growing a grade. We're bringing on some new programming next year. We know enrollment fluctuates. So, we're looking at our projections for next year and projecting to cover. I think tied into your question as a former teacher, is what are we looking at here? Last year, we ended the year with every grade level performing below 50% at DIBELS. Our highest grade level was about 46, 47. Now, our beginning of the year started higher than it did last year. And at midterm, we saw a three-point gain from where we started at the beginning. But we're still seeing about the upper 30s, 40% right now, average, for the middle-of-the-year assessment. So, when you average about 31, 3200, third and fourth graders each year, you're looking about possibly over 50% of that. And so, the other piece is, I'm going to sneak in some answers if I can. I don't want me to take your time. But the other piece is, is that even if a student passes, it will trigger some, it'll trigger for the teacher some areas of concern so that you can probe into deeper testing. And those who don't pass triggers a level of intervention for other testing for other areas.
For the sake of-
What is it?
Yes.
So, DIBELS is dynamic indicators of something, 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 because you asked me. But basically, DIBELS tests and assesses the five components of reading. So, it's your phonemic awareness, your vocabulary, your comprehension, your oral word fluency. So, those of you who've studied reading and know that there are five components of reading, it breaks those down into subtests. It's an oral exam. It's given by a teacher, one-on-one, under five minutes. That's why we have a DIBELS coordinator for each school, who trains a team, because usually the team goes and does a pull-out while the teacher's teaching in the room. They can bring them to the library, into the hall, into the ancillary area. They engage one-on-one with the child. And it used to be that the teacher did it on paper and pencil, then had to enter into a spreadsheet. The spreadsheet came to accountability. Accountability loaded into CIS, then it went to the state. Amplify has an online portal. Teacher, I'm with my iPad, I'm with my laptop, I enter as I'm assessing. It goes into the Amplify portal that links to our CIS system to transport to the state. It saves our teachers a lot of work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Board Member Martin.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask Mr. Lewis's question about the impact, the effect on students that English is a second language and similar.
Yes, thank you. So, it's, DIBELS is what's considered to be a universal screener. It's a gatekeeper. So, it, and actually, when you read the piece to Bulletin 1566, it's designed to identify those students at grade level or below. So, it's going to give you that basic achievement level. But it's going to give you some subscores. And so, what teachers are able to do is filter those subscores. And after we talked, through the help of Ms. Dupre, we talked to the 504 department. And so, what, basically, what they have is a guidance sheet out, and they filter those subscores. Okay? And so, they look for certain indicators. And if a student is tracking that way for multiple assessments, or over time as they progress monitor, it triggers a separate assessment, for example, dyslexia. And then, the district has rights or ownership of a Pearson assessment, that's a dyslexia screener. It could be that they convene an SBLC to review and bring in 504, or talk to the parent about a 504 evaluation, or other things depending on what they see on the universal screener, then bringing in other assessments to dig deeper.
And did I understand you correctly to say that this, that this assessment is normally given three times a year?
Yes, sir.
And then, the expectation is that the, is that the teacher and the school will make dynamic adjustments for each child based on needs identified, particularly progress in that, in that middle period?
Yes, sir. Thank you for that question. So, state bulletin requires that every child be assessed in the first 30 days. And historically, in Louisiana, you've just had to report that one. You do a middle-of-the-year assessment, usually either right before or right after the Christmas holidays. Different districts do it differently. And then, for the first time ever, we've just been notified, we will have to report end-of-the-year assessments in our CIS as well. And so, you do the last 30 days of the year. The Amplify portal offers online intervention services and instructional resources. So, once you get Andrea's score report, it's going to show Andrea's areas of weakness. And then, it will tell the teacher, direct the teacher where to go for intervention activities. So, I can print and use their sample lesson plan, their activity cards and whatnot to address that specific student's areas of weakness. And then, we team with the literacy division, where in accountability, we put out the assessment portion of the calendar. Schools have a DIBELS calendar. You assess during this time. And then, our literacy counterparts fill in what you should be doing and focusing on, we call that progress monitoring, in the weeks in between. And so, then it's time to assess again. You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Russ? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gode.
Just, thank you, ma'am. Just two quick items. One, I just would like to point out whether or not you agree that this is a good thing or not, or whether or not it's something that we should be doing or not. Again, it's another unfunded state mandate coming down. And so, the district has to bear the cost of these. And, you know, you can argue whether or not the regulations are good or not, but we continue to get regulations put on us with no funding to meet those regulations. And just for your help, DIBELS is dynamic indicators of basic early literacy skills.
Thank you. Because I was put on the spot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Okay. Mr. Lanis.
Now, I'll just be real quick. Thank you, Madam Vice President. I just wanted to second what Ms., well, first of all, Ms. Okowski did an excellent job explaining this entire process.
Thank you, Mr. Lanis.
Let me say that for one. Secondly, I'll just say, and I want to second what you said, the idea of us adding this item and the importance of it is that we are trying to identify which students need the literary support today, so that we can start making those changes later on. I just want to also second that, as a district, one of the things that the superintendent has been trying to, he's been steadfast in making sure that we continue to prioritize has been literacy, from the early levels all the way up into our high schools. We know that we have a significant sum of our students that may be behind on grade level. So, this is the reason why this is of optimal importance to make sure we get it in front of our, not only our teachers in our schools early, but before our boys, so they can understand what's going on. So, I just wanted to second that and say you, thank you again for this excellent, excellent explanation.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the board? Okay. Comments from the public? Okay. We have Ms. Chalace or Mr. Chalace Epley. Chalice. I'm sorry for butchering your name.
I'm used to it. I was just listening to the statistics on the number of children who pass DIBELS. And I understand I was having a conversation with Mr. LaSire out there. And it has to be disheartening when less than 50% of our children are passing at a fourth grade level on an achievement test. I'm an older Sturmer grad, so I come from the working side of the tracks. And I would just be curious if the board wonders why that statistic is so low? Because you would think, I would think, I don't know, at least 60 to 70? But it has to be disheartening to the children as well. So, is it the way the test is structured? You know, there's obviously some type of problem there. Just some food for thought for the board to think about? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Epley. Additional comments from the public? Okay. Comments from the board? Mr. Gode.
Yes, I would just like to make my comments to Ms. Epley. This is an issue that is the number-one issue on the priority of the board. It is the number-one issue in the strategic plan. And it is a statewide issue. This is not an East Baton Rouge issue. East Baton Rouge is about equal with the state. We, I think we might be just a tad below the state. But this is a statewide issue. You go to any parish in the state or any school district in the state and get almost exactly the same numbers. Yes, we recognize it's, it's an issue. And as our superintendent has been trying to lead us, it's an issue that starts at birth. And we have so many kids coming to kindergarten not prepared for kindergarten, not kindergarten-ready, is I think the terminology that's used, which is one of the reasons why we're putting such a big push on early childhood education and trying to work through many, many things. It's why we put literacy coaches in schools. That's why we're trying to upgrade all of the daycare centers that we work with. So, to me, that is the number-one issue that we have as a school board. But it's an issue that everyone in the state, and really across the nation, is fighting. And so, it's a big task. It's a big lift. It won't be done in a year. It may be done in 10 years. But if it's done in 10 years, we've got to start somewhere, and now's the time to start. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Kudos, Mike. I mean, everything you said was spot-on. And also, what exacerbates this issue is children that English is not their first language. You know, they're held accountable as kids when English is their first language. So, it really puts everybody behind the eight ball. And that was why I had so many questions about this. And it was not a money thing. It was, are we getting everything we possibly can get for those dollars? And just a personal story, I was retained in the fourth grade. I still bear the scars of someone who was retained in the fourth grade. And it was primarily because of reading. So, it's not a new problem. And if you want to know why it bothered me so bad, because that is why. I understand what it does to a child when you're retained on a grade. And, you know, it took me years to catch up. And I'm an avid reader now, but, you know, it took me years to catch up. And I still bear those scars. And I know what some of our kids are going through when they cannot read fluently. A lot of acting out that takes places in classrooms in our schools is because children are asked to read aloud, and they can't read aloud. So, they do other things to cover up the fact that they're, that they're not a fluent reader. So, that is why I was so passionate about this item on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
Board Member Lewis summarizes the importance of this issue much more succinctly than I can. But I want to second everything that he and Mr. Gode said. But I want to emphasize that, you know, it takes 10 years to see the impact on one particular child from, you know, of getting a child able to read by third grade. It takes them another 10 years to graduate, nine years to graduate. But we get new crops of kindergarteners every year. And it should not take us 10 years to improve early childhood literacy. To me, when I ran for this, for this seat, that was my biggest focus and biggest desire. Because if a child's not reading by third grade, and in fourth grade, making the transition from, from learning to read, to reading, to learn, it's unlikely that they're going to be successful after that. We need to do everything we can, devote all the resources we possibly can, to focus on that early childhood literacy component for the reasons that Mr. Lewis says. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to share one additional comment as well, that I know, you know, we have used DIBELS for quite some time within our school system as well. And in some cases, it has proven to be successful. And I want to say maybe, you know, part of the comments that Mr. Lewis was giving before, before we, we had public comment, was just simply about whether or not we might need to evaluate as time goes on, whether or not DIBELS is the most effective program to use for the sake of meeting the needs of the different challenges of our students. But as far as the, the time crunch that we're in now, of course, we need to continue with this process. But maybe we can evaluate as time goes on, whether or not there are other sources or resources available that would be more helpful and more efficient for the entire student population. So, I just wanted to add that comment. Thank you. Any additional comments from the board? Madam Secretary? Call for the vote, please.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Thank you. Item four, resolutions, special counsel. Consideration of a request for the approval of resolutions regarding the retention of the special counsel between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and A. Phelps Dunbar LLP and B. Hammond Seals Atkins Geis Noah and Perkins LLP. Calling for a motion? Okay. Moved by, moved by Board Member Lanis, and then seconded by Board Member Lewis. All right. Comments from the board? Okay. All right. President Lanis.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I just wanted to ask counsel if he could explain this particular item. I know that we're, I won't say concerned, but there were some questions about the item. So, thank you. Thank you, President Lanis. Yes, members of the board, Superintendent Narcisse, school boards are authorized under state law to secure the services of legal counsel via resolutions. And so, school boards have this as an option. Those school boards that utilize legal services, as you know, we utilize a large number of legal services. We're a very large district, very complex district with a lot of needs. And so, these two firms have served us for quite some time, quite effectively. In fact, the last two resolutions for each of these firms was respectively 2003 and 2004, I believe. So, their rates have been static since that time. And I have had to work with lead counsel in both firms over time to talk about how we can bring them up to the, what is the AG standard rate? The AG sets a statewide standard rate for public entities. At the time, they were set at the statewide rate. As you know, inflation, time passed. We continued to pay them at that, at the old rate for almost 20 years. So, we are now here tonight to look at, to consider new resolutions by the board to bring them up to the AG standard rate. Another some questions about one of the resolutions, particularly for Phelps, that had some exceptional rates included. And the reason for that is Phelps also employs attorneys in specialized areas. Occasionally, we will use those services, but not often. As you, if you read the resolution, you'll note that counsel, general counsel, has to authorize the use of those services. Oftentimes, the board will notify the board of the use of those services. And many times, they're very specialized in nature. So, I did want to address that. These rates were negotiated up to the AG rate, and there was a lot of discussion back and forth between myself and lead counsel. But it's my recommendation that the board adopt these resolutions going forward. And I'll take any questions. Yes, sir. So, just to follow up for absolute clarity, whether we went with these external councils or we chose any other external councils, this is something that was mandated and mandatory by the state of Louisiana. Correct. And so, we don't have to bring resolutions every year, right? It actually benefits our board to not bring them back often. Because, you know, as the rates increase, we continue to pay the rates of the old resolution. But 20 years is a long time. And so, we felt like it was time to consider something for counsel. They've been effective. They've served the district fully. I've been pleased in my four and a half years in the, in the chair, working with them. And so, this is my recommendation. Additionally, the state attorney general has to approve what the board votes on tonight. So, we will take this to the state attorney general for additional approval. If there are any concerns, we'll come back to the board and bring those back to the board. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Board Member Gode.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Shamblin, could you just give us an example of what would be a special circumstance that they might go after? I think I know, but I'd like for the public to be able to hear it.
I'll give you a real-life example that I dealt with just this morning. I'll give you a real life example that I dealt with just this morning. As you know, we have a 10-year tax plan, and we purchase property through that plan. Well, one piece of property we purchased has a title issue along one of the borders. It's minor. But Phelps is, we're utilizing a title counsel attorney from Phelps to handle that matter. And specialized counsel, you know, require specialized fees, right? So we're paying them at the old standard rate 20 years ago, which is really unusual. And so this would allow us, when needed, to utilize counsel for those types of specialized tasks that fall outside of normal school law requirements, if that makes sense. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Comments from the public? Okay, comments from the board? Okay, Madam Secretary, lead us in a vote, please.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Thank you. Item five, stipend, special education in English as second language teachers. Consideration of a request for the approval of one-time stipends for the following. A. $2,500 for new teachers teaching in the critical need teaching area, ESS, special education. B. $1,000 for teachers teaching in the critical need teaching area, English as a second language. Strategic alignment, operational excellence, and exemplary customer service funding source, ESER. Is there a motion? Okay, it's been moved by President Lanis and seconded by Board Member Lewis. All right, comments from the board? Okay, all right, Mr. Baloo.
Can we have somebody explain this? Wondering why there's two different amounts, one for the ESS, new teachers, and one is, I think, for every teacher under ESL?
Yes, let me get Ms. Hall, our Chief HR, to give you context. Board Member Baloo.
Good evening, everyone. Can you guys hear me? Yes, good evening, everyone. So the reason why there's two separate amounts. So for ESL, that's a hard-to-fill position. And we've been struggling for a while to get those position fills. So trying to be competitive and be on the front page to be able to recruit and retain qualified teachers and fully certified teachers. The ESS is a different amount. That's a stipend amount, 500 the first half, 500 the second half. And that's because we were mandated by the state. We got in trouble back in, I want to say, 2021, I think it was November. And I did send the documentation to Ms. April Lamont to share with y'all. And this was part of the corrective action that we do as much as we can to recruit and retain qualified, highly qualified, highly certified ESS teacher. So this is part of the initiative, the recruitment initiative for both ESL and also ESS.
Point of clarification.
Yes.
You gave the 1,000 in regards to, I think you switched the amounts.
1,000 for ESS and 2,500 for ESL.
Okay, and so what the document says is 2,500 for ESS and 1,000 for ESL?
Oh, I'm sorry. That first. My apologies.
What about the existing ESS teachers? Did they get a stipend this year?
They already received their stipend, yes.
So these are the ones that didn't qualify for that because they were new?
Right, this is, right.
Okay, that's all I had.
Okay.
Thank you. President Lanis.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I just wanted to give you all a, just a quick little.
Well, my team.
Right, so I just want to say thank you all for rectifying that situation so that all of our teachers that work for our system feel valued in the space, knowing that they are getting equal compensation. I know we couldn't group everybody together, but you know, we did figure that out. And I just wanted to give you all kudos again. So thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Russ.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a clarification, Ms. Hall. So for new ESS teachers that were hired this previous fall that just occurred, did they receive the $7,500 hiring bonus?
The ESS teachers, yes.
Okay, so this is in addition to?
No, 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 I'm sorry. No, they received the 3,000. No, no. So the 7,500 for core teachers.
That was for core, okay.
Exactly, math, science, ELA, social studies, yes. So those are for core. So that was the 7,500, and they did not receive the $3,000.
Okay, so these are new ESS teachers that have received no stipend?
They have received the $3,000 stipend.
Okay. For our ESL teachers, so they're, previous to this year, they've received a $1,000 yearly stipend, correct?
Yes.
And this is, are we instead, through this motion, are we looking to pull that funding from a different place?
No, so we have a really cool thing happening in HR. I wish we have more time to kind of talk about our Grow Our Own program. So we've literally tried to create our own pipeline within HR through recruitment and retention. And this came from that pot of money where the $7,500 sign-on bonus came from, which is from, we have Dr. Beth like be able to speak on funding, but that's where that pot of money is coming from that was already earmarked and allocated for our initiatives from, through HR, through our Grow Our Own program.
Okay, and so that wasn't through ESER funding?
It was, but it was already earmarked for our own.
So it's the same pot?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Is there any way that pot can get any larger? Is it my turn? Am I speaking out of turn? And you know, I say that kind of tongue-in-cheek, but our ESS, I mean, that's a very critical need area. I drove by this building for almost an entire year, and you had yard signs out there advertising for ESS teachers.
So there's a difference between the ESS substitute program. So we have an internal program that we partner with an external party called ESS. So those were the yard signs that was out there.
Okay, I just saw ESS.
Yeah, so I'm sorry.
The sign didn't go into that much detail.
Yes.
But, you know.
But we are still looking for ESS teachers, yes.
I mean, money beats looking all the time.
I understand.
So we really need those teachers. They are under tremendous amount of stress. There's a shortage. So they find themselves doing jobs that, you know, it's not necessarily in their wheelhouse.
Yes.
And some of those same teachers are dealing with children who are, English is their second language as well.
Yes.
I just think whatever we can do, wherever the money comes from, we need to find it and get some highly qualified, certified ESS teachers in our buildings.
So with you guys' blessings tonight, we're going to be able to do so. Is there any other questions?
Mr. Lewis?
I'm done.
Okay, I just wanted to share as well, just from previous experiences, when we think about our teachers in our classrooms who may end up with students who have exceptionalities or who have IEPs, and then also having students who come to us with very limited English, if they can even speak in English at all. It is so very necessary that we have that additional support on campuses. I noticed when I was in a classroom where I had an inclusion teacher who would have been an ESS teacher at that time to assist with the special needs of my students, it allowed me to cover more and more of my scope and sequence and my pacing and the many different facets of my curriculum that I was not able to do when I did not have that support. And so it allowed, you know, pretty much for there to be a higher level of achievement in the class. Otherwise, there's the thought pattern of maybe core teachers need to be certified in ESS as well. And so, of course, that's an even higher amount of money than just simply providing, and Ms. Hall, if you can confirm for me, a one-time stipend. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Yes.
And by the way, I want to put in a plug. We do have a certification for ESS for core teachers through our own program.
All right, so core teachers, you all hear that?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional comments from the board? Okay, comments from the public. Ms. Epley.
First of all, I'd like to say that I appreciate all of your service. And anything I say only comes from a heart of having a daughter who has a teacher, having a son who was dyslexic, and being a graduate of East Baton Rouge Parish Schools. So I could probably talk five minutes on this one, and it's probably going to be something y'all have heard before. But, you know, by and large, I just think teachers across the board these days get a bad rap. I mean, the teaching profession is not like it was when I was in school or it's almost like been demonized. And teachers these days, they put up with so much, and they have so many things to consider and so many balls up in the air. I just, my hat's off to teachers. So if you could give them all a big raise across the board and make it the profession that it once was, that would be totally acceptable to me. I think, I've heard, being older, that, you know, they think people go into the teaching profession because they're not smart enough to be engineers or doctors. My daughter graduated with over a 4.0 out of the NASA School District. She has a master's in education because teaching was her calling. So please take that in mind, as I know you do. When it comes to special ed and English as a second language, go to Texas to get the ESL teachers. I promise you, they are there. I promise you. I almost felt like I needed to speak Spanish to live there, and it's just an idea. But, and the other thing, I've attended several board meetings, and I have heard comments about special ed children either not being identified or not getting the services. And that's a real concern because as a parent of a dyslexic child, I can tell you that that puts a real burden on the parent. Because that parent loves their child. They want them to succeed, no matter their exceptionality. And so whatever this board can do to help those kids be successful, I think is, makes our society better. So I'm for the stipend. I would really be for that much across the board for everybody, but I know y'all are constrained. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Epley. Any additional comments from the public? Okay, comments from the board? All right, seeing none. Madam Secretary, will you lead us in a vote, please?
Please vote. The motion carries.
Thank you. There is a special comment from President Lanis.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Vice President. I just wanted to shout you out. We are at 1 hour and 3 minutes, and we are about to close this thing out. So you are doing an excellent job. Keep up the great work, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you. We have some announcements. Item D, next meeting dates and announcements. Board Member Stewart.
February 2nd, oh, that's today. I'm sorry. The regular board meeting is to be held on February 16th, 2023, at 5:00 PM in the Central Office Boardroom. Committee of the whole is to be held on March 2nd, 2023, at 5:00 PM in the Central Office Boardroom.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you so much.